Okay, thank you. We'll call the meeting to order and I'd just like to thank everybody for coming in. Uh, virtually, uh, we had to change a few things around to accommodate the Loop Troop that are having a play coming up with the Lloyd Watson Center and they needed our stage and our, our place where we have our meeting. So, thank you so much for coming in and joining us. I would like to just do the land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that the community of the municipality of Highlands East located on the Treaty 20 Mitchissee Gag territory and in the traditional territory of the Mitchissee Gag and Chippewa nations collectively known as Williams Treaty's First Nations. The community of the municipality of Highlands East respectfully acknowledged that the Williams Treaty's First Nations are the stewards and caretakers of these lands and waters in perpetuity and that they continue to maintain this responsibility to ensure their health and integrity for generations to come. Roll call.
As I call your name, please answer here or present. Counselor McKenzie?
Present.
Counselor Lewis?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Ryle?
Present.
Counselor Strong? Counselor Strong? You need to unmute yourself.
Present.
Thank you. And Mayor Burton?
I'm here. Uh, approval of the agenda?
That the agenda for the special meeting of council of November eighteenth, twenty twenty five be approved as circulated?
Could if someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. I don't see, uh, I can't see Cease's face up there, by the way, Rob.
Okay. No, he has disappeared, leave at the scent. It was carried though? We had quorum? Okay.
Yep. And minutes?
Is there any, sorry, Mayor, disclosure of pecuniary interest?
Seeing none.
Perfect. Uh, that council for the municipality of Highlands East approves the minutes of the special council meeting of October seventh and the regular council meeting of October fourteenth, twenty twenty five?
If someone move? Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Lewis. All in favor? It's carried?
And those are to be approved. Sorry, I did not state that. Good. Carry on.
Okay, this morning, uh, we have delegation. We have Shoreline Road allowance ten thirty-nine point trail. Crystal Shannon, welcome, Crystal.
Now you can hear me.
There.
Good morning, Mayor Burton, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Crystal Shannon and I'm here as agent on behalf of the owners of ten thirty-nine point trail, Rohan Thivi et al. Before I begin, I need to address an issue. The public agenda circulated for this meeting has removed correspondence I provided last week, including the email thread documenting staff directions, enforcement involvement and communications that are directly related to June seventeenth decision. I asked the clerk why this correspondence was removed from the agenda and there was no response as to why it was removed. From my understanding, however, council has received the correspondence privately, but the public has not. Given that the correspondence forms part of the factual record of the file, I just wanted to confirm that everybody received that.
And, and we did, Crystal, and thank you.
Perfect. So, I want to emphasize that council be aware that transparency and procedural fairness are essential elements of your decision-making responsibilities, which is essentially why I'm before you today. I'm here to ask council to amend its June seventeenth resolution for SR two zero two five dash one four three by removing the requirements to relocate or demolish two long stand longstanding structures that are now converted to storage and replacing the condition with the correct planning act process, the same process already being used for the shoreline deck. I believe this request is simple and fair and entirely consistent with the municipality's goal of ensuring compliance. When the owners purchased the property in two thousand and two, both small structures already existed. The real estate listing actually described them as workshop slash man cave, woodshed and storage shed. And importantly, there's even a bunkie slash playhouse for the kids. The owners relied on this description when they purchased the property. They now understand that the bunky or sleeping cabin requires explicit zoning permissions and that the the use promoted in listing would not be permitted under the zoning in place. Once this was clarified for them, they acted immediately and in faith. Before the June meeting, bedding was removed and any sleeping use was stopped. Neither structure contains plumbing and both buildings have been used solely as non-habitable storage ever since. There were no complaints, no orders and no indication at the time that either structure needed to be removed. But the procedural issue rose later on June seventeenth. For some background, in March twenty twenty five, donors applied to purchase the shore road allowance. This is a municipal land disposition process. It's completely separate from the short-term rental licensing. However, the May fourteenth inspection carried out for the SRA was later interpreted through the STR framework. And importantly, at the time of the inspection, the cottage had not yet been open for the season and the owners had not had the opportunity to make necessary changes that were completed shortly thereafter. The records that you received have pictures showing how the cabins have been converted. However, the file advanced the SRA process and the STR licensing regime became intertwined. You'll note that I did provide a transcript of what happened at that meeting where it was recommended to you that because it's a coming through the STR regime that it should be demolition or relocation. Once those two regimes were blended, the outcome shifted. When the matter came before you guys, um, obviously it was made so that they had to remove them or relocate them. In the same discussion, staff acknowledged that the SRA resolutions do not typically include structure removal even. The distinguishing factor in this case was the incorrect application of the STR lens, however. Because of that crossover, a planning outcome was reached without any planning act process and without the procedural protections the act provides, including notice, a hearing and appeal rights. The owners were also not advised or invited to attend despite the significant impact on the property. This brings me to the most important comparison. Council was correctly advised that the shoreline deck requires a zoning bylaw amendment to be recognized. The owners accept this entirely. It is the proper planning path act pathway for longstanding structures within shoreline setbacks. Sorry, I'm also sick, right? And they're prepared to proceed with that process. This is significant because the two small storage structures are longstanding and pre-existing and be can proceed the same way as the deck. Nothing distinguishes them from the deck in terms of appropriate planning treatment. Both are existing structures, both are modest and both can be addressed through site-specific zoning bylaw amendments supported by a site plan agreement. The difference is that the deck was evaluated under the planning act while the sheds were evaluated through the STR bylaw, which is a municipal act licensing tool and not the mechanism that determines the legality or permissibility of structures or property. This is inconsistent treatment and is the core of a procedural defect that I'm now asking you to correct. With this context in mind, the solution for me and the owners becomes straightforward. The owners have already ensured that both the structures are non-habitable, completely unplumbed storage buildings. The images are attached in the agenda and they're willing and ready to proceed through the planning act channels. A site-specific zoning bylaw amendment and accompanying site plan agreement would give the municipality clear control over permitted use, plumbing restrictions, vegetation buffering and any additional conditions council would consider. This is the same lawful pathway already being applied to the deck and there's no reason that accessory structures can't be handled the same way. So now I'm asking council to make a motion to remedy this.
Thanks, Crystal. Um, any questions, council? Comments? I, uh, I do have a resolution, Crystal, that I'm going to bring forward. I'm probably going to add to it a little bit that, uh, uh, we received the delegation and, um, I'd like a full staff report to come back to council on, on what's happening.
And I can also note that the owners have been fully compliant with the STR. They have removed their listing and I have reached out to the director currently for a conditional license to be considered as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, clerk, could we have the recommendation, please?
The council received the delegation as presented by Ms. Shannon regarding ten thirty-nine point trail at the November eighteenth, twenty twenty five special meeting of council. And furthermore, council direct staff to bring forward a report to a future meeting regarding the matter.
Could I have someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thanks, Crystal.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Department reports, building? Colin?
Mayor Burton, can you still let see me?
Sorry, Cease?
Can you not see me or can you see me now?
I, I can see you now.
Thank you.
You haven't changed a lot since the last time.
Not really.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor and council. So staff have the monthly operations report for October for council's information. Uh, overall, the numbers ended up pretty close to last year's totals at this time, so that's promising. And staff are also working on a detailed report with the outstanding numbers for septic reinspection. We'll bring that back to council in December, but that's kind of my report for today. Thank you.
Great. Any questions? Comments? Uh, resolution?
The council received the building department monthly operations report as submitted by the chief building official as information only.
Could if someone move? Deputy Mayor Ryle, second by Counselor Strong. All in favor? It's carried? Thanks, Colin.
Thank you.
Uh, bylaw, bylaw operations report. Wayne coming in?
Morning, Mr. Mayor and council. Uh, you have our report before you. As was requested last month, um, you'll note on the last page during October, Mike has made a concerted effort to focus on previous incidents or reports and close the ones that we can and, uh, finalize either the ones are can be finalized or no longer valid. You'll also note that there's at least thirteen from previous months that have been closed. And during November, we'll continue to do that.
All right. Thanks, Wayne. Uh, any questions for Wayne? Cease, go ahead.
One of the things that I brought up, uh, last time, uh, in the last meeting was what can we do about, uh, about making it easier for you guys to, 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 uh, enforce a lot of this stuff. Like I said, it goes back, as I said then and I'm saying now. Some of these go back to two thousand and eighteen, a pile of them go into the early twenties. Um, and, and a lot of it is due to the fact that we're held up with, with, with the way perhaps our bylaws are either worded or give you the ability to enforce them. Uh, I asked at that time to, if we could come up with, uh, with any kind of, uh, of a way to get around, not, not say get around it, but solve that problem and, and giving you the ability to, to close things faster. One of the things that we spoke about just very quickly and didn't go pursuing any further was the whole concept of of reorganizing our, our bylaws to incorporate a better fine system similar to what we're doing with the STR program. Um, I, I, I would imagine at this point in time, we're still working on that. At least I hope we are. Is there an opportunity to get some kind of a brief, uh, statement from, from, uh, either staff or, or, or bylaw enforcement itself as to what options we would be available in order to make it easier for you to, to both enforce and, and, and understand how the bylaws can be, can be closed faster. Uh, like I said, I'm not sure, but, but we have been dealing with this now for as far as I can figure, over ten years. And, uh, and we need to come up with something that makes it easier for you guys to operate. So if we can't get a, 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 a report this meeting, can we possibly get one in, in, in December? Not, not so much going through all of the, the process, but merely identifying options that we could pursue.
Through Mr. Mayor to deputy? We can do that. It takes time. And, you know, like over October, Mike made a concerted effort to go through the files to see which ones could be finalized. One of the issues that we have is the provincial offenses court is so backlogged that they're throwing stuff out of court now. So I think, uh, eight, I think it's eighteen months. If it takes more than eighteen months to go through the court system, it just gets tossed. So there's no point in pursuing that avenue. Um, you know, administrative penalties? We can, um, maybe have a look at the administrative penalties and revise some of the bylaws to make sure that we have, uh, those in place. That's all we can do. And as far as a report goes, we can try and get one for next month.
Thanks, Wayne. Other questions? Cease?
Yeah, wait, I, I, again, this is not a, 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 this is not a criticism of, 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 uh, bylaw enforcement staff itself. I, I just don't think you have enough tools to make the job work. One thing I do know is if you are somebody that's getting a fine, depending on what that fine is and how it's graduated, uh, you start to pay attention. Uh, that means that we don't have to worry about courts until it becomes a real, real issue. But if we do end up with some kind of a financial deterrent, it may solve some of the simpler ones and, and certainly bring a focus on the ones that are more difficult to solve. But that's what I'm trying to get around is, is how do we not get stalled in provincial courts and then end up losing the whole thing because it just takes too long or it gets thrown of it after you guys have worked eighteen months on it?
Other questions? Resolution?
The council received the monthly operations report for the bylaw department as submitted by the bylaw officer.
If someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried? Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Uh, fire department monthly operations report. Chris?
Good morning, Mayor Burton, members of council. Before you have the monthly operations report showing thirty-five calls for October, two hundred and seventy-five calls to date. It breaks down to five calls for station one, one call for station two, twelve calls for station three, eighteen for station four and one call for station six. Couple other dates for recognition there is the, um, emergency men at training and annual exercise took place on October twenty ninth. Uh, most staff, or there was staff participating, continuity of operations workshop. And then on November fourth, the municipal emergency control group completed the annual exercise requirements uh, in coordination with the rest of the county and municipalities. That's all for the monthly operations report.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. Any questions? Uh, seeing none, resolution?
That council accepts this report as information as submitted by the fire chief.
Could I have someone move? Counselor Strong, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Uh, firefighter appointment report, Chris?
Thank you, Mayor, again. A short report. Uh, this report is just asking to add three firefighters to the active roster for a twelve-month probationary period. Mike Machula to station one in Cardiff, David Greve to station two in Highland Grove and Jack Hudson to station three in Goodroom. And that's all for that report.
Thank you. Any questions? I'd just like to say congratulations, Chris. I'm glad we're picking a few up.
Thank you. There's a few more applications in the works as well.
Perfect. Uh, Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask how many applications because I know that Pawdash and Highland Grove have really been out recruiting, trying to recruit for the roster. So that's looking good. If maybe in the future, can we? How many of our applications are coming in? Could, could you put that in your report? Just so that people know that it's, it's actually paying off, that they're getting out there and, and talking to people.
Certainly. Right. Resolution?
The council, the council receives this fire, fire appointment report as prepared by the fire chief and further the council appoint the following to the roster for a twelve-month probationary period. One, Michael Machula to station one Cardiff, David Greve to station two Highland Grove and Jack Hudson to station three Gooder.
Okay, could if someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Uh, fire department surplus vehicle?
Thank you again, Mayor. This report is before you. This was mentioned at last month's meeting. It's simply that we've replaced the rescue in station three. It was a two thousand and five F two fifty. It is now excess and surplus and I'm asking for council to declare it so, so it can be disposed of through um, online sales, whether it's through gov deals or local website and newspapers. Thank you.
Any questions? Uh, resolution? Robin, I don't think council probably heard you. I heard you through the wall.
Okay.
Try it again.
I thought I unmuted myself, but anyways, here we go. The council received the fire department surplus vehicle report, two thousand and five Ford F two fifty rescue two zero three pickup as prepared by the fire chief. And further, the council declared the two thousand and five Ford F two fifty rescue two zero three pickup as surplus.
Could I have someone move? Uh, Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Um, the Dizert and Highlands East automatic aid agreement update and review. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. Before you have the report, uh, and also the actual agreement along with the agreement map. Uh, this agreement between Dizert et al. and Highlands East is due for renewal. The draft agreement and map have been attached for the, to the report for review. There's been minimal changes to the agreement. Um, the agreement has the agreement areas have been defined by lot and concession numbers they were missing before, as well as updating some of the fees. When additional resources are requested to stay on scene, those can be found in Schedule A, section ten. And other than that, there's been no changes. That's all for that report.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Any questions? Uh, resolution?
The council received this report as prepared by the fire chief and further the council approved the agreement as written. Um, or it said provide direction for recommended amendments, but I presume council wants to approve the agreement, agreement as written?
Yep.
Yes? Okay.
Could I have someone move? Counselor Strong, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Uh, Parks and Recreation and Facilities monthly report? Caitlin is doing this, isn't it?
Yes, she is.
Just wonder if she's on mute?
Good morning, Mayor. You do have my, yeah, I do like to just add one thing to it. Um, the Hurley Heath Park new sign in the northwest parking lot area will, will be completed this week as well. That's all I have for my report.
Any questions on Jim's report? Seeing none, uh, resolution?
The council received the Parks Recreation and Facilities monthly report as submitted by the property supervisor as information only.
Could I have someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Uh, facilities rental automation and case study report? Caitlin, I believe.
Mayor Burton, it would be Heath.
Heath, sorry.
That's okay.
Good morning, council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Um, good morning, Mayor and council. I'm pleased to present the facility rental automation report and case study highlighting how our new system is transforming the way residents interact with the municipal facilities and how it's delivering measurable value to our community. Just a brief, uh, overview, um, as you will remember, the project overview, the old process was very manual, um, taking staff time either at the, at the front counter, phone, Excel and email. It was very inefficient for staff as well as residents. The new system is an online booking portal automated, which provides automated workflows, secure access codes and integrated feedback using the Microsoft Power Platform. Key results to date, our residence rate booking ease and satisfaction very high, um, a hundred percent rated at a score of four or five out of a scale of five. And staff workload is reduced approvals and reporting are fifty percent faster. The strategic alignment, um, it supports council's goal of service and operational excellence makes facility rentals more accessible and efficient. And, um, one other point, there is a case study, um, provided by Endeavor that, um, highlights the streamlined process, improved security and better data for planning. And residents benefit from intuitive booking and simplified communication. Now, if Caitlin could, uh, there is a brief video that I would like to, uh, showcase the residence, uh, experience and it takes approximately eight minutes. Um, so if Caitlin could produce that video now for council to see up to the eight thirty mark, that would be great.
Welcome to the facilities booking app, a modern, efficient solution designed to simplify how municipalities manage facility rentals. Before the municipality of Highlands East adopted this app, staff spent countless hours manually coordinating bookings, sending follow-ups and tracking approvals. It was time consuming and prone to errors. That changed in July twenty twenty five when the municipality of Highlands East launched a custom-built solution using Microsoft Power Platform developed by Endeavor Solutions. This app transformed their operations overnight. Now residents can book facilities directly through the municipal website. The system handles confirmations, sends auto emails and keeps staff informed, all in real time. The app includes booking management, admin notifications, the citizens portal and built-in feedback surveys, all designed with privacy and security in mind. Now, with that said, let's jump right into the demonstration. Over to you, Mark.
The facility booking process starts with navigating to the big booking page that could be embedded onto any client website, selecting the facility from the list and then selecting the available date and unavailable time from the calendar. And lastly, their contact information. After you submit the booking, the applicant would receive a notification email along with a link to the rental request form that they would have to complete to proceed with the facility booking process. On the notification email they would receive, On the notification email they would receive, at the end of the email, there would be a link to the rental request form. Once they click on the link, a new browser window will open to the rental request form. Due to the automation we've built for this solution, information that was selected on the booking page would auto populate related fields on the rental request form. An example is, I selected Town Hall on the booking page, that's why it shows Town Hall on here. Um, if I select Municipal Arena, just to show that the applicant name that I added on to the facility booking demo page shows up here as well, along with the email address and the event start date and the event start time that I selected on the booking page. On the rental information section of the form, the applicant would be asked to fill in all required information before they could proceed to the next section. Since I selected the municipality arena and changed it from my original selection, I'll revert it back to Town Hall. Based on the facility they selected on the booking calendar, additional information might be required. An example is if they selected the Town Hall facility, which I did, they would be presented with an extra question to confirm their rental. Uh, once applicant selects their rental type for Town Hall, I would select entire facility. The same questions for all rental requests would be displayed, and they would need to complete all required sections before proceeding to the next section, such as group name. And since email and phone number, our email has already been auto-populated based on the booking page, I would add in my phone number. And then my address. Or the applicant's address. The event or activity type. Activity. Um, similarly, the email and first name, the event date, and the event start date and the event start time has already been auto-populated from the booking page. They only need to select the end date. So, for example, this event would happen on the twenty third, three P M, with the end time, say, two hours. So, three plus two is five P M. And they would have an option to select if this would be a recurring event. If they select yes, they could select which days this would reoccur. Uh, I would just select yes on here and then say this event re, uh, occurs on every Thursday, or every Thursday. And then, finally, they would select the estimated number of attendees. I would just say twenty sixteen, one hundred. And then, they would then proceed to the next section, which is the event detail section. Moving on to the event detail section, based on the selection they choose on this section, the email notification they would receive would vary in content. To start off, the applicants would have an opportunity to display their event via signage that they would, they could customize themselves. Uh, if they select yes here, they would be presented with this question about the event info details with limitations on the signage. And then they could proceed to the next question. If an event would have alcohol and they selected yes to this question, an alcohol permit would be required to be provided, and it would be included in the email confirmation they would receive after submitting the form. So, for now, I would just select yes, and then proceed to the next question. Would there be used in attendance? I would just say yes for now. Um, similarly, another question is if the event would serve food and they selected yes to this question, and yes to um, this question as well, a food handler training certificate would be required to be attached and sent to the municipality's facility email, which would also be included in the notification email they would receive after submitting the whole rental request form. So for now, I'll just select yes, and then select yes here as well, and then proceed to the next section, which is the disclaimer. So on this section, um, applicants would just need to agree to all the disclaimer and all the contract agreement before they could finally submit the form. Just agree to all these. Rental conditions and information would begin from here with all the limitations and all the restrictions. And once they've read all the rental conditions and information, they would select yes, I agree, before they could finally submit the rental request form.
In conclusion, Council, the project delivers strong resident satisfaction and operational improvements, and I'll open the floor to any questions Council may have at this time.
Okay, thanks, Cease. So, Counselor Lewis?
Uh, yeah, um, so people can still come into the office, though, and, and book a hall or whatever?
Um, through you, Mayor, um, Counselor Lewis, um, yes, uh, staff can, and staff are, sorry, the public can, and staff are able to uh, put all the information on their behalf in the system.
And have you heard anything back from like our community groups that use the halls on a regular basis? Is this easier for them, or are they finding difficulty with it?
Um, out of the exits, uh, every, every rental, um, receives a rental survey, and out of the results that we've received, um, everything has been rated four or five as far as satisfaction levels.
Other questions? Resolution?
The council received the facilities rental automation.
Oh, just one second, sorry.
Yeah, I would have a, I would have a tendency to, to disagree slightly with, with, uh, with the comments that are, with related to the groups that we have. We have four or five of them that, that are basically the community groups, and they do an awful lot of activities in the area. And, uh, there's nothing wrong with the idea of what we're doing, but at the end of the day, every single time they make an application, they have to complete all of the information, which is basically the same. And they do it on a regular basis. To me, uh, that's all right, but it's, it takes the bureaucracy away from us, but it puts the bureaucracy in the hands of the not-for-profits that we depend upon to, to make our communities what they are. So, is there any way we could simplify it so that at the end of the day, they don't know who is going to show up to a specific meeting sometimes when it comes to, to, to preparing food and stuff? So they're, they could have three or four different people that are, that are food preparation, uh, certificates. Um, if they put down one and that person doesn't show up, now what do they do? And can, they can't put three or four, or is that an option that they could do? Uh, the same thing, too, when it comes to the opportunity, they get, they get permission for the for, for the rental, but it doesn't indicate whether the rental fee is going to be, uh, waived, or what we're going to do with insurance, or how they can get access to a key if a key is required. So this is information that's extremely important, and they can't operate without it. A lot of times, too, in, in the form of an event, the event is on a specific evening, they have a lot of stuff coming in and going out over a period of a week. Um, how do they get access to the building? Is it covered in this? Uh, to me, uh, there's nothing wrong with this if you're, if you're someone who is setting up a, uh, an event for, for a specific, uh, period, you're going to do one thing and you're going to put all that stuff together, which is really good. But we have stuff that's the same thing over and over and over again, uh, that, uh, that the people repeat. Uh, is there no way, shape, or form that we can come up with something simpler for our, for our, for our groups? Uh, I've had this discussion before, and I'm having it again. Now we've made it automated, so now there's no people involved anymore. So at the end of the day, it's almost, it's very frustrating on the part of some of the people that I deal with to get a human being that can actually come back and say, hey, listen, uh, we need to get an access code for this, or we need to get some, a key for that, or, or, or is there an opportunity for us to, to, uh, get in there earlier? They don't know that because something they were supposed to have didn't happen, which is not uncommon to anything that we do. So is there any way, shape, or form, and especially in, in, in my neck of the woods, which is over in the Goodham area, and you have to have an access code in order to get to a key, in order to get into the building? The S, the access code changes on a regular basis. So at the end of the day, uh, the access code that you got the last time is not the access code you got this time, but you got a truckload of food coming in and you can't get into the building. So I'm very, very concerned about that kind of stuff, uh, and, and at the end of the day, I don't know how this, if anything, is going to help. I can't see it helping. I can only see it being uh, a lot easier to, to handle the bureaucracy. But the logistics of what it takes to put on some events, I can't see it helping there at all.
Keith?
Um, in, in short, um, we have had no such feedback from the community groups to that effect via the exit, uh, via the exit survey. Um, I will take your comments and look at, at, adding, uh, di- different, adding those possibilities to future development of the product. We are looking at, um, this was the first, uh, kick at the can, so we were looking at doing different iterations. We'll definitely take those concerns and address them in due time.
Great. Other questions?
Thank you.
Angela?
Yeah, I, I agree with Cease on that one. I've actually talked to a few of our, uh, community members that, that put on a lot of stuff, and they say that it's, it's going to get, it, it, it's not going to be friendly for them because they do, just as Cease is saying, they have these community events that happen all the time on a constant basis. And so, yeah, if we could find something to help them out, because they are the heart of our community, all of the ones that um, do all, all of these, these things in our communities, and, and they put a lot of hours into it. So if we can find some sort of a solution that helps them out, that would be great.
Great, I totally agree. Uh, resolution?
The council received the Facility Rental Automation and Case Study Report as prepared by the Deputy Treasurer, and further the council accept and endorse the case study prepared by Endeavor Solutions on behalf of the municipality of Highlands East.
Could I have someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor Strong. All in favor? It's carried, thank you. Uh, Economic Development Monthly Report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, on behalf of our Economic Development Coordinator, Michelle Little, I'll just be quickly going through her monthly report for the month of October. So from Michelle's report, you can note, uh, the Visitor Information Center is now closed as of, uh, after Thanksgiving weekend. Uh, their last day of operation was October the eleventh, and Michelle has provided to, for council's information, uh, the monthly comparison of visitors from year over year. So, um, our numbers are fairly consistent with what we've been seeing, a little bit lower than in previous years, but, um, for the most part, right on par. Um, Michelle has provided with, to council, the, an inf- update on the mineral waivers and claims. Uh, just the number of processed and some, also some, uh, comments that we've received on, um, having those claims available to the public. Uh, Michelle has also provided for council's information, uh, some trail counter information, and as well, uh, some information as it relates to Ride the Highlands. So, we're now a part of the, uh, OTO, the program along with OTO. And so the Information Center is now listed as a rest, a rest stop on the website. Um, and so it's another way for us to expand our reach out into the community, um, for these types of events. So, um, that is Michelle's report, and if there's any questions, happy to try to answer them for you.
Questions? Seeing none? Resolution?
The council receives the October twenty twenty five Economic Development Report as information only.
Could I have someone move? Counselor Strong, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Uh, Environment, Environmental Monthly Report?
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council. I believe you have my monthly report before you. A couple of updates on operations I'd like to provide. Include the team working diligently at DWQMS end of year, um, tasks including risk assessment and internal auditing, which is taking place later this week. We have received our Dino onsite drinking water inspection from our municipal inspector. He was on site on November thirteenth. We're awaiting the results. And the sewage sanitary line has been replaced on Short Street addressing the road damage, and I believe paving is to follow. That concludes my report. If there are any questions, if we have to answer them.
Thanks, Patrick. Any questions? Seeing none, resolution?
The council received the Environmental Monthly Report, November twenty twenty five, as submitted by the environmental supervisor.
Could I have someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you.
Uh, Public Works Monthly Works Update? Perry?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Member of Council. Um, sorry, my video isn't working, but, uh, you don't need to see my ugly muggy anyways. Um, before you is my Public Works Report. Uh, we're reviewing our municipal boundary road agreements. Uh, staff health and safety is always ongoing and paramount in our departments. And staff are now in full maintenance, uh, full winter maintenance mode, having been out treating roads, including plowing and or sanding. Uh, we're hoping that this cold weather stays. It would make it a lot easier to, uh, carry on with the, uh, with the winter maintenance, uh, versus the freeze thaw that, uh, we have had in previous years. Uh, staff are preparing our annual capital and operating budgets. Uh, they're in draft and have been sent to our C A O for further review. And the temporary full-time operator position, uh, the closed yesterday, and we're hoping to do interviews this week to fill that, uh, temporary position, um. In the meantime, uh, the waste ups, uh, the waste update, uh, reviewing site operations efficiencies are ongoing. Um, our waste operations supervisor is initiating, uh, tablets in the near future for our staff to, uh, keep a handle on, uh, all of the, uh, workings of the, uh, the waste sites and the transfer station. Uh, the grinding of the C and D piles, uh, which in the process of being completed, um, uh, getting started first of all, and then completed, uh, in very short order. And, uh, pricing of materials to complete the capital work for the Glomorgan Transfer Site is completed. Uh, we will be ordering the products and having them on-site before the end of the year to most likely do the work, uh, in the spring of the year, once, uh, once everything's thawed out. But, uh, and that, before you is my report. If there's any questions or concerns, uh, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks, Perry. Questions? Uh, Counselor Lewis?
No, Carrie, um, how do we, uh, because I know that I just, I, I got an email this morning about a, a road of Jibway and Clark that hasn't been sanded, um, since we got any, any of the fro, or any of the freezing rain that had happened. Um, so how do we judge that with buses coming in and out? You know, are those roads take priority? Bus routes?
Uh, through you, Mayor Burton, to Counselor Lewis. Um, could you repeat that, please? Sorry.
Like, how do we, um, how, how does the department, do they take, do, do the side roads that have buses going up them, do they take priority? Like, like, how do you, how do you, because I, I know Like, like, how do you, how do you, because I, I know that I did get an email this morning that Ojibwe and Clark hasn't been sanded at all. And so, a- and that is a bus route. So how, how do we rectify that?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I, I would beg to differ that, uh, it hasn't been sanded. Our, uh, our staff, we have seven plow routes, uh, with seven trucks, and, uh, they're all out. Uh, being very diligent to make sure that the roads are, uh, treated. Um, the problem with this type of year, Counselor Lewis, is that, uh, we could sand them at seven o'clock in the morning. And by three o'clock in the afternoon, all the sand disappears because the, the weather during the day warms up. And the sand disappears through what snow or ice is there. And, uh, in an actual fact, it would look like we have not treated the roads, which, um, which we do. Um, we're mainly trying to get our staff out, uh, you know, i- it's kind of a, a call situation. Whether we should have, uh, trucks out, but, uh, we always err on the side of, uh, if we're in doubt, send the trucks out, type of thing. So, um, but I will take your, uh, your comments and I'll, uh, I can follow up with, uh, staff to ensure that we are. Uh, prioritizing all the roads. We don't, we don't pick and choose, um, back roads or side roads. Uh, this time of year, with this type of weather, the main roads are usually always spot on. They're good because, uh, the condition of them, the side roads are the ones that give us the, the, the most amount of grief right now.
Other questions? Resolution?
The council received the public works monthly update.
Sorry, I got Cease.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I think I'm having a senior moment, but I'm gonna ask the question again because I can't remember how you answered it when I asked the last time. Um, in the spring, uh, a lot of municipalities have, uh, a, a brush gathering or the capability of people to. To take a lot of brush, especially if it's on the side of the road or somewhere near in that particular area. And then it's, 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 it's got rid of, uh, it, it really makes a big difference, uh, to, to the actual people. And I can't remember whether we were, when we spoke about this the last time. Whether it's something that would be included or be thought of, at least to be included in the twenty twenty six budget in the spring. Uh, it's in the spring where the gross, most of this is needed because there's a lot of winter fall. And, and a lot of this stuff has to go somewhere, and we don't particularly want to have fires all over the place. So the idea was to have some kind of a collection place where people could take it, and then it would be, uh, properly, uh, shredded or, or otherwise chipped. In, into a way, i- is that something we're gonna be considering in twenty twenty six?
Uh, through your, your, uh, Mayor Burton to Deputy Mayor Ral. We'll definitely have a conversation, uh, uh, myself and our C A O, uh, to see if there's something that, uh. We could, uh, help mitigate that risk for sure.
Other questions? Resolution?
The council received the public works monthly update as prepared by the public works manager for information purposes only.
Could I have someone move? Counselor Strong, second by Counselor McKenzie, all in favor? It's carried, thank you. Counsel, I think we'll have a ten-minute break before our, uh, public meeting.
Get your life.
Caitlin, I didn't hear a word you said.
You're live, you're ready to go.
Still don't.
Mayor, can you hear, um, me speaking?
You're live?
You can't hear me?
I can't hear anything.
Mayor and Clerk, we can hear both of you.
Caitlin, your video's on. You're up loud. Host has stopped your video, okay? You. Don't know why you're not hearing anything. Let's go down here to more. What's that, sorry?
I'm just gonna pause the livestream for a moment.
More. Okay, can you start? Can you guys hear us?
Yes, we can.
Oh, see, yeah, but.
Hear us? Yes, we can. Oh, see, yeah, but. Your life.
Okay, thank you. Um, we'll leave the, uh, special meeting of council.
The council committed the special meeting of council for the scheduled public planning meeting. And it to be declared open to discuss the following amendments made under section seventeen and thirty-four of the Planning Act. As amended pertaining to applicants Basset and Simonelli, as amended.
Could I have someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor McKenzie, all in favor? It's carried.
Right. The participants for the planning meeting wish to share the sentiments of the land acknowledgement statement delivered earlier at the start of the special meeting at this time. This is a public meeting held pursuant to section seventeen and thirty-four of the Ontario Planning Act. The purpose of this meeting is to provide the public with an opportunity to receive information, ask questions and offer comments regarding the proposed. Official plan amendments under section seventeen and zoning bylaw amendments under section thirty-four that are being considered by council. Section seventeen of the Planning Act governs the process for preparing, adopting and amending official plans, including requirements for public consultation. Section thirty-four addresses changes to zoning bylaws that regulate land use, uh, and development. If you wish to be notified of council's decision regarding the applications discussed today. Please ensure you submit your request to myself, Robert Rogers, the municipal clerk. So today, council, we have a couple of files, the first being, uh, for the official plan amendment. Basset, file number H E O P A zero two twenty twenty five. Part Lot Three, Concession Three, Parts One to Six on Plan nineteen R, six thirty-three, three. Part sixteen on Plan nineteen R forty-eight eighteen, Part Three on Plan nineteen R ninety-two forty-nine. In the geographic township of Glen Morgan, municipality of Highlands East. And it is located at ten thirty Mineral Lane, Roll Number four six zero one nine zero one triple zero twenty-two four hundred. Um, as of this morning, there were no comments that had been received from agencies or the public. So at this time, I will ask Chris Jones, the municipal planner, to provide an overview of the application.
Uh, thanks, Madam Clerk and Mr. Mayor Council. Everybody can hear me okay?
Yes.
So, um, Mr. Mayor Council, this is an application for an official plan amendment. And the report on this is, is brief, uh, and that's because, um. This, this is an O P A that, uh, council has previously adopted. Um, it was about a year ago, October eighth, that, uh, that this O P A was originally adopted. Uh, it proceeded to the county of Halliburton, where it was approved in December. And, uh, and wha- what happened was the, uh, the applicant subsequently prepared a, uh, a current plan of survey. And it came to everybody's attention that the, the nature of the setback, that was the sole purpose of the O P A. Was, uh, incorrect, uh, it was out by a meter. And so official plan policy being official plan policy, it was, uh, it was, uh. The, the, the whole premise of the O P A was to accommodate the creation of, of one new shoreline lot. Um, on the basis of the conversion of a, an existing detached garage into a dwelling. Uh, and that, the, uh, the official plan requires new lots to have a minimum setback of thirty meters. And the O P A that was originally adopted, uh, established a minimum setback with twenty meters. And I, I guess that was based on a, on a prior, uh, uh, survey sketch that, uh. That the parties had, had sort of put their faith in. Um, again, current, uh, plan of survey comes, comes back, shows that we're out by a meter. And so that's what then brings this back for another goal round. And so the, uh, yeah, sole purpose is just to tweak the, the original O P A. To, uh, recognize a nineteen-meter setback for the, uh, intended structure to be, uh, converted to a dwelling. And, uh, and the, uh, O P A is in the agenda, together with a bylaw for council's consideration. And that, that's my summary, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Chris. Um, so at this time, I do believe we have Sue Harrison from Places and Spaces Consulting, the agent for Basset, who wishes to speak to the application.
Uh, good morning. Um, thank you, uh, Mayor Burton and members of council. I'm Sue Harrison. I'm the authorized agent for this application on behalf of the Bassetts. Uh, Chris has provided you with all of the information, and I don't wish to waste council's time reiterating the same information. I would also just note that, um, this application is supported by a planning justification report that I prepared. And a site evalu- evaluation report that was prepared by McKelskey Nielsen. Um, so we support the, uh, recommendation as proposed, and should there be any questions, I'm available to, uh, deal with those. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Um, Mayor Burton, does council have any questions for Ms. Harrison?
Seeing none, Robin.
Okay, thank you. Um, at this time, there are no members of the public who wish to comment to this application. And so based on that, um, we will move on to our second file. And the second file pertains to, um, rezoning, uh, for Simonelli. File number R Z zero one twenty twenty five, Part Lot Sixteen, Concession Seven. Part Four on Plan nineteen R fifty-eight thirty-eight, Geographic Township of Cardiff, Municipally Highlands East. And it is located at fifteen ninety-two Lewis Road, Roll Number four six zero one one oh one triple zero sixty-three four hundred. There were no comments received, um, or sorry, there was a comment received from Crow Valley Conservation. Um, saying that they did not object to this application, however, a permit would be required. And suggested that Highlands East may wish to address recommendations provided by Cambium and the slope stability assessment. Uh, there were no comments received, um, by members of the public. So at this time, I would ask Chris Jones, municipal planner, uh, to do an overview of the proposal.
Thanks, Madam Clerk. Uh, Mayor and Council, this is application R Z oh one twenty twenty five. Applicant name is Simonelli. Uh, these folks are at Lot Twenty-One, Plan Four Twenty-Eight. At fifteen nine, fifteen ninety-two Lewis Road on Potash Lake. And, yeah, you have my report dated November eleventh, um, and so the, um. The, a couple of things that, uh, that this application is, is intending to, uh, accomplish. Um, firstly, the a- applicant is looking to, uh, expand the, the dwelling. And I, sorry, I didn't, I'm just looking at my report. I didn't actually include the site plan of the proposed dwelling. But if we go to figure two. Um, that, that's the existing dwelling and a, uh, and a detached, uh. Uh, accessory, uh, uh, pavilion gazebo structure. Um, they look like they're attached in that survey. In fact, the, uh, the, uh, the, the, the gazebo structure is sort of. A bit taller than the, than the house, and it, and the roof line cantilevers over the roof of the dwelling. So that's the, what you're looking at is the existing, uh, uh, structures on the property. And these structures are compliant with the twenty-meter setback. Uh, the applicant is looking to expand in, in a lateral fashion. Uh, to the, uh, I guess to the east, and then, uh, as well as sort of in an L shape back toward the road. Uh, that, that, um, expansion has a ground floor area of just over thirteen hundred square feet. And includes a covered porch that, uh, has a floor area of a hundred and seventy square feet. Uh, the second item, which I've already alluded to, is the, uh, uh, the gazebo. Um, pavilion structure on the, uh, west side of the property. Um, that structure was constructed, um, I think a couple of years ago without a permit. It's an open-air, um, uh, again, gazebo pavilion type structure. Um, and so the, uh, again, back to the, uh, the objective of the applicant is to, again. Recognize that structure and its, and its proximity to the, uh, existing dwelling. Um, as well as the, uh, the proposed expansion. And to accommodate all of that requires a bump in lot coverage from ten percent to fourteen point one percent. Um. So, the, um, just in, in consideration, uh, again. Uh, the clerk did refer to comments from the C B C A, um, that, uh, spoke to the, uh. Um, erosion hazard limit and, and some technical work that was done by Cambium. To address, uh, C B C A requirements or concerns. Uh, secondly, the, uh, the lot has been the subject of, of some, um, historic removals within the shoreline. And, and perhaps in the area, uh, proposed for construction. Um, so to that end, uh, planning department did require a, uh, shoreline restoration plan. And so what we see in figure three is, uh, uh, the, uh, the, the recommendation. From a, uh, uh, from a, um, independent, uh. Uh, landscape professional, uh, to, uh, to see restoration. Uh, in, in the manner of, of ten trees and a hundred shrubs in that defined area in green. And so, uh, I, I've been to the site, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, the. And so uh I I've been to the site, uh Mr. Mayor and Council, the um the any any time are are you're looking for an increase in given take uh with when it comes to um the loss of natural vegetation. I think in this case, it is a mitigating factor that the uh the applicant is looking to uh to restore a fairly substantial part of the shoreline with uh uh with shoreline um remediation, restoration proposed by their uh their consultant. Um the applicant has entered into a site plan agreement to uh uh to require the the shoreline work, the restoration work, as well as the uh um and at at this juncture, my understanding is as uh uh municipality is is waiting for the uh a security to be posted. I I understand the site plan agreement has been executed by the applicant and upon receipt of the uh security, which is held against the uh uh implementation of the shoreline restoration, then that security is subsequently released. Uh that's my summary on this, Mr. Mayor and Council. If there's any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Chris. Um council, is there any questions that you wish to ask, Chris?
Seeing none, Robin.
Okay, thank you. Um the applicants aren't in attendance nor any members of the public to make comment on this. So um at this time, uh we will close out our um public planning meeting with the adjournment. Do you wish me to go forward, Mayor?
Please.
The council adjourned the public planning meeting at eleven oh nine AM and that council reconvened to the special meeting of council.
If someone move? Counselor Strong, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Uh the public planning meeting recommendations?
The council received the planning reports for Basset and Siminelli as provided by the municipal planner. And furthermore, that the official plan amendment for Basset be approved at this meeting and staff be directed to circulate notice and forward the approved official plan amendment to the county of Halliburton for review and approval. And that the approval of the zoning bylaw amendment for Siminelli be deferred pending the posting of the security required by the site plan agreement.
If someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thanks, Robin. We're back to our department reports, I believe eight point eight, planning, planning department monthly. Carmen.
There we are. Good morning, council. Today's planning agenda includes several planning applications for council's consideration. I will provide an overview of each application as well as the monthly monthly planning department report, which is before you. General update for the month of October. Staff attended service delivery review meetings with representatives of the county of Halliburton and the lower-tier municipalities to discuss how planning services can be better delivered across the county. The main focus of the planning group is discussion around a consolidated official plan for the entire county. As of November eleventh, planning staff have provided comments or completed zoning reviews on a hundred and twenty-six building permit applications. Planning department activities. Zoning bylaw amendments. Pre-consultation comments requested October two. Pre-consultation comments requested year-to-date fourteen. Pre-consultation comments provided October zero. Pre-consultation comments provided year-to-date seven. ZBA complete applications received October zero. ZBA complete applications received year-to-date twenty-one. ZBA is heard by council October zero. ZBA is heard by council year-to-date fourteen. ZBA is passed by council October zero. ZBA is passed by council year-to-date fourteen. Uh consents. Pre-consultation comments requested October zero. Pre-consultation comments requested year-to-date four. Pre-consultation comments provided October zero. Pre-consultation comments provided year-to-date five. Pre-consultation comment resolutions passed by council October zero. Pre-consultation comments resolutions passed by council year-to-date three. Minor variance applications received October zero. Minor variance applications received year-to-date two. Minor variance applications heard by committee of adjustment October zero. Minor variance applications heard by committee of adjustment year-to-date one. Site plan approvals. Site plan approval, the site plan applications received October zero. Site plan applications received year-to-date ten. Site plan agreements approved by staff October zero. Site plan agreements approved by staff year-to-date seven. Severance agreements approved by council October zero. Severance agreements approved by council year-to-date two. Subdivision condominium applications year-to-date. Pre-consultation new applications zero. Extension of draft approval zero. Official plan amendments, official plan amendments year-to-date. Pre-consultation one. Complete applications received two. Official plan amendments passed zero. Um shoreline road allowance dispositions. SRA applications received October zero. SRA applications received year-to-date twenty-six. SRA applications approved in principle by council October zero. SRA applications approved in principle by council year-to-date eighteen. SRA bylaws passed by council October zero. SRA bylaw passed by council year-to-date five. Dealing bylaws passed by council October zero. Dealing bylaws passed by council year-to-date five. Encroachment agreements uh applications year-to-date twenty-two. Encroachment agreements approved seventeen. Telecommunications proposals, proposals reviewed by council October zero. Proposals reviewed by council year-to-date one. Um and now we're going to move into our planning uh applications. Shoreline road allowance purchase at thirteen sixty-six before long.
Carmen? Yeah. We just need, we just need to do the resolution for your.
Pardon me.
You'll be a minute.
Okay, the council received the planning department update October twenty-twenty-five as prepared by the planning technician as information.
Could I have someone move? Counselor, Deputy Mayor Ryle, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Uh shoreline road allowance purchase thirteen sixty-six before Long Lane.
Thank you, Mayor. Applicant Van Leeuwen care of Bishop Guy are surveying. Um this lot is located at concession fifteen, part lot twelve, registered plan nineteen R sixteen seventy-eight, parts twelve to fourteen in Glamorgan. The application was received on August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, and a bylaw officer attended the site on October ninth, twenty-twenty-five. The applicant requests to purchase the shoreline road allowance in front of their own lot, or pardon me, in front of their lot to own to the water's edge of Cauchlong Lake. A survey was submitted with the application and showed no encroachments on the shoreline.
Great. Questions? Not uh resolution?
The council proves in principle an application to close and purchase the shoreline road allowance from Van Leeuwen, care of Bishop Guy are surveying, and direct staff to forward to the municipal solicitor for circulation. And further, the council renders the land in front of thirteen sixty-six before Long Lane surplus to municipal need.
Could I have someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Shoreline uh road allowance purchase applicant Bernie.
Yes, um shoreline road allowance application, ten eleven Hammock Drive, applicant Bernie Care of Phillips. Uh this property is located at concession seven, part lot twenty-one Cardiff. The application was was received on August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five. The applicant is seeking to purchase the shore road allowance on Potash Lake to facilitate the replacement or repair of their boathouse. The submitted survey identifies several shoreline encroachments, including an overwater boathouse equipped with a rooftop deck, boardwalk, sunroom, deck, and frame shed. Additionally, records indicate that the septic system was flagged as a high risk in nineteen ninety-two and has not been addressed since that time, according to our records.
Okay, questions? Not resolution?
The council proves in principle an application to close and purchase the shoreline road allowance from applicant Bernie Care of Phillips. Part of the original shore road allowance in front of part lot twenty-one, concession seven, township of Cardiff, municipality of Highlands East within county of Halliburton, upper Potash Lake, ten eleven Hammock Drive, roll number four-six-zero-one-one-oh-one triple-zero seventy-one two hundred. And that council directs staff to forward to the municipal solicitor for circulation. And further, that prior to rendering the land surplus to municipal need and permitting the disposition of the shoreline, that one, any non-compliant or unlawful buildings or structures in the shore road or on the applicant's lot, including the septic system, be addressed to the satisfaction of the building and planning departments. And finally, the applicant's apply for and receive a zoning bylaw amendment to recognize the footprint of the dwelling and attached deck, which is located on the shore road allowance and non-compliance with the required shoreline setback. The rec- the requisite amendment may also recognize other non-compliant buildings and structures on the shore road allowance and the lot. However, in accordance with the municipality's official plan, such buildings and structures may be required to be removed.
Now, I think I had a question, Cece. Did you have a question?
No, actually, I was waiting for the, my concern was the uh was the high-risk septic system, but it looks like we're covering that off as part of the conditions to be resolved.
Could I have someone move? Someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by uh Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Shoreline uh road allowance purchase at bylaw to stop up and close and convey applicant, I believe, is Yakato.
Yes, uh shoreline road allowance purchase at bylaw to stop up, close, and convey ten thirty-nine Farret Trail applicant Yakato. Concession thirteen, parts, part lots twenty-eight to twenty-nine Glamorgan. The application was received in February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. A council resolution to approve in principle was passed on March eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. The applicant seeks to purchase the municipally-owned shoreline road allowance in front of their property on Stormy Lake. The dwellings and boathouse encroach on this shoreline. All of the conditions of the purchase set out at the March eleventh, twenty-twenty-five council meeting have been met, including a site visit from a bylaw officer and a zoning bylaw amendment to address the dwelling in the boathouse has been passed.
Okay, and questions? Uh seeing none, resolution?
The council received this report and accepts the recommendation in this report to declare surplus and prove the bylaw to stop up, close, and convey the original shore road allowance at this meeting for applicant Yakatu. Description of land concession thirteen, part lot twenty-eight to twenty-nine, ten thirty-nine Farret Trail, Stormy Lake, roll number four-six-zero-one nine oh two triple-zero eighty-five six hundred.
Could have someone move? Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. A shoreline uh road allowance purchase at bylaw to stop up and close and convey applicant is Weir.
Shoreline road allowance purchase, um applicant Weir for eleven oh six Lucky Copper Trail. Uh this property is located at concession five, part lots four through seven, registered plan nineteen R forty-five thirty Glamorgan. The application was received on August third, twenty-twenty-three. A council resolution to approve in principle was passed on September twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. The applicant seeks to purchase the shoreline road allowance on Salerno Lake to own to the water's edge. The shoreline has been altered in violation of the county's shoreline preservation bylaw. Registration of this bylaw is conditional on entering into an encroachment agreement with the municipality, completing shoreline restoration, and providing a restoration report.
Okay. Questions? Uh ru- resolution?
The council received this report and accepts the recommendation in this report to declare surplus and approve the bylaw to stop up, close, and convey the original shore road allowance at this meeting for applicant Weir. Description of land is concession five, part lot four to seven. Plan nineteen R forty-five thirty at eleven oh six Lucky Copper Trails, Salerno Lake, roll number four-six-zero-one nine oh one triple-zero fifty-three six hundred. And that the bylaw shall not be registered until the property owners have entered into an agreement with the municipality regarding the remediation of the shoreline road allowance to the satisfaction of the municipality of Highlands East and the county of Halliburton.
Could I have someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Uh requests for encroachment agreement lands of Freeman.
Request for encroachment agreement Airport Road landlocked property lands of Freeman. The applicant seeks an agreement for legal access over an unopened municipal road allowance in Crown Land. The vacant lot is located off Airport Road, situated behind an unopened municipal road allowance in a twelve-acre parcel of Crown Land. The applicant constructed a road over both the Crown Land and the unopened municipal road allowance to access the landlocked property. The ministry, the Ministry of Natural Resources has indicated no opposition to the road constructed over the Crown Land. However, the municipal road allowance has already been altered and a driveway constructed prior to the permission being sought from either the MNR or the municipality of Highlands East. The applicant now wishes to sell the property but is seeking a legal access route prior to the sale. Approval is recommended subject to conditions, including notice to neighbors, survey, insurance, annual fee, and a zoning bylaw amendment to address the to address the lack of frontage on a municipally-maintained road.
Okay. There's a recommendation. I I'm going to suggest that we, uh council, look at option one. Um if there's any discussion. If not, uh the recommendation, Robin?
That council received the report, request for encroachment agreement, lands of Freeman as information, and further that council chooses option one being. Council directs that they support the application in principle, subject to the following conditions. A notice of the use of the road allowance be circulated to adjacent neighbors. Two, a plan and survey showing the portion of road allowance to be used in to be used, be prepared, and provide to municipality of Highlands East. The applicant provide proof of insurance with comprehensive liability for the use of the road allowance. An agreement be brought forward to review in direction by the council of the municipality of Highlands East. The agreement will include acknowledgement that the applicant shall not have exclusive use of the road allowance. Requirements for the maintenance of appropriate signage. Indemnification of the municipality against liability or claims arising from the construction on or use of the road allowance, insurance requirements, maintenance requirements, responsibility with regard to the entrance permit, as well as any other conditions deemed prudent by the solicitor acting for the municipality. The applicants shall apply for and obtain a zoning bylaw amendment to address the lack of frontage on a municipal road prior to any future development of the land, following council's acceptance of the encroachment agreement and its enactment by planning staff. And finally, all the above are at the expense of the applicant.
If someone move, okay, uh Deputy Mayor Ryle, do you have a question?
Yeah, it's just one. It it is there an opportunity in the future for additional property to be developed using this access? Uh or is it just the one, one piece of property that's going to be dealt with here and there's no opportunity in the future to go forward? Why am I asking? Because if the person picks up the cost for all of this, which includes the insurance and anybody else comes after the fact, would they be subject to charges as well?
Through you, Mayor. Um the road allowance uh as shown in, I believe the map was amended to the um the agenda, but it only crosses a small portion of the road allowance. It doesn't follow the whole thing. Um meaning it only accesses one lot.
Any other questions? Uh could I have someone move? Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Uh request for free waiver, eleven seventy-five Quartz Lane.
A request for fee waiver at eleven seventy-five Quartz Lane, lands of Shrogen. The request was submitted on October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, following the rejection of a building permit application during the zoning review process as the proposal exceeded the permitted ground floor area of the dwelling and deck, which was established by a previous zoning bylaw amendment in twenty fifteen. The applicant is seeking a waiver or reduction of the twelve hundred dollar zoning bylaw amendment fee for a proposed deck expansion. The proposed deck expansion is located within the high-water setback, meaning that any expansion requires a zoning bylaw amendment regardless of previous planning approvals that these property owners have received. As the application will still require the same public notice, circulation, and planning review required of any other zoning bylaw amendment application, staff recommend upholding those fee requirement as the municipality's planning fees are based on a cost recovery model.
Okay, thanks, Carmen. Um council, uh uh questions? I was going to entertain option three, but council, any questions or comments? Cece?
Has this particular piece of property come before us before? I'm just wondering because it sounds familiar.
Through you, mayor. Yes, Deputy Mayor Ryle, this property has been subject to, um, a site-specific zoning bylaw amendment in twenty-fifteen to address, um, two additions that were added to the property.
Other questions? Uh, resolution?
The council received the report, request for fee waiver, eleven seventy-five Quartz Lane, Lands of Shrogen from the planning technician as information. And further, that council chooses option three as amended. And option three being council denies waiving the twelve hundred dollar application fee.
Could I have someone move? Councillor McKenzie, second by councillor Strong. All in favor? It's carried, thank you. Uh, request for encroachment agreement, Smiley and Eyes.
Yes, uh, request for, request for encroachment agreement sixteen fifty-seven Ripple Rock Drive, Smiley and Eyes. The application was received on November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, following the rejection of a building permit application for roof repairs and window replacement due to zoning issues. The dwelling is situated only seven meters from Cauchlong Lake and the shoreline road allowance is not owned by the applicant. Based on current information, the dwelling appears to be entirely positioned on the municipal shoreline road allowance. The applicants have arranged for a survey to determine the price, precise boundaries of the encroachment in the setbacks of the dwelling. The applicant is requesting an encroachment agreement for the dwelling, which encroaches on the shoreline road allowance, pending completion of the shoreline road allowance closure and purchase. Staff, staff recommend approval of the agreement to permit necessary repairs to the dwelling's roof and replacement of the windows, subject to conditions, including proof of insurance, notification, notification to neighboring property owners and a payment of annual fees.
Yeah, thanks, Carmen. Um, so council, that, that looks, the recommendation would probably be option one. I believe, is, any questions? Okay, resolution?
The council received the report, request for encro- encroachment agreement for Smiley and Eyes as information. And further, the council chooses option one being council directs that they support the application in principle, subject to the following conditions. A notice of the proposed encroachment agreement be circulated to adjacent neighbors within sixty meters in accordance with the use of municipal land policy, bylaw number twenty-two-four dash thirty-six. The applicant provides proof of insurance with comprehensive liability coverage, naming the municipality as an additional insured as required by policy. An agreement be brought forward for review and direction by council to include acknowledgement that the applicant applicant shall not have ex- exclusive use of the municipal land, indemnification of the municipality against liability or claims arising from the encroachment, insurance and maintenance requirements, and any other conditions deemed prudent by the municipal solicitor. And that all costs, including legal surveying, advertising and circulation are to be, uh, borne by the applicant.
Could I have someone move? Councillor Lewis, second by councillor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. Uh, request for concurrent Shared Tower Inc.
Carmen, I believe you're on mute.
I knew it was going to happen once today. Thanks, Robin. Um, request for concurrence, Hadlington Road, Shared Tower Inc., Telecomation, telecommunications tower site, S T C zero seven nine six. The request was received on November third, twenty-twenty-five, following a public information session which had been held by Shared Tower Inc. on October sixteenth, with no attendees joining from the public. Shared Tower Inc. has provided a letter of authorization as well as a letter of undertaking to the planning department. Shared Tower Inc. requests the municipal concurrence provided for a proposed ninety-meter telecommunications tower to improve cellular service in the region. The site is considered suitable, not adjacent to sensitive features, and public consultation requirements have been met.
Great. Any questions? Comments? See none, resolution?
The council received the report, request for concurrent Shared Tower Inc., tele- telecommunications tower site, S T C zero seven nine six, Hadlington Road, from the planning technician as information. And further, that council direct the chief administrative officer treasurer to sign a letter of concurrence to Shared Tower Inc. for tower site, S T C zero seven nine six.
Could I have someone move? Count, or Deputy Mayor Ryle, second by councillor Lewis. All in favor? It's carried, thank you. Thanks, Carmen. Finance, approval of accounts? Thank you, I'm mute.
There we go. That the general accounts for the month of September and October twenty-twenty-five in the amount of two million seven hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-three cents be approved.
Could I have someone move? Councillor Lewis, second by councillor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Uh, council receivable policy? Keith?
Good morning, mayor and council. I am here to present the accounts receivable policy for non-taxation accounts as re- recommended in the staff report. Purpose and background, this policy is designed to establish consistent and transparent practices for billing, receipting, interest and penalty application, collections and write-off governance for all non-taxation accounts receivable across municipal departments. Municipalities benefit from formalized accounts receivable policies by reducing risks of delayed payments, revenue loss and inefficiencies in tracking receivables. This policy applies to all municipal services and activities except property taxation, which is governed separately. Key features of the policy, accurate invoicing. Invoices are issued promptly, supported by approved user fees and departmental evidence. We have, it proposes a collection ladder. The policy outlines a clear process for managing overdue accounts, including reminders, final notices and escalation steps such as service suspension or transfer of unpaid fees to the property tax rule where covered by statute. Credit privileges, new customers requesting credit must be complete, sorry, must complete an application and agreement form. Terms and interest rates are communicated in writing. Write-offs. Only debts for which all reasonable collection actions have been taken may be submitted for write-off. Debts over five hundred would require council approval. Transparent, transparency and auditability. All actions are documented and standardized forms are used to ensure consistency and audit readiness. And finally, strategic alignment. This policy supports our commitment to service and operational excellence by improving efficiency, accountability and customer service. At this point, I'm happy to answer any questions or provide further details as required by council.
Hey, any questions? Not, uh, resolution?
The council received the report, accounts receivable policy is provided by the deputy treasurer as information. Further, that the policy be governed, accounts receivable billing and collections of non-taxation accounts be brought back to a future meeting of council for approval.
Could I have someone move? Councillor Lewis, second by councillor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Uh, third quarter financial statements for twenty-twenty-five. Brittany?
Yes, thank you, mayor. So, provided to council was a copy of the third quarter financial statements for twenty-twenty-five. Uh, these statements are provided each quarter and as of September thirtieth, we should be at approximately seventy-five percent of our budget. Uh, within the, um, documents provided to council, you will note that some of the transfers to and from reserves that we typically do uh, towards the end of the year have not been completed, so some of those department variances, um, may be somewhat inflated. Uh, so that is my report, if there's any questions regarding that.
Questions? See none, resolution?
The council received the report, third quarter financial statements, twenty-twenty-five, as submitted by the C A O treasurer.
Could I have someone move? Councillor McKenzie, second by councillor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. Uh, twenty-twenty-six annual O P P billing update, Brittany?
Yes, thank you, mayor. So, the next report is, um, just, it's for your information, council. It's in regards to some updates around our twenty-twenty-six annual O P P billing update. Uh, we did receive some email correspondence back in September from the Honorable Michael S. Kersner, who is the Solicitor General. Um, they've done a review of the Ontario Provincial Police Cost Recovery Model, and there have been some amendments made, um, to the legislation, uh, affecting, uh, some of the billing. So, of to note for twenty-twenty-six, that there will be an eleven percent cap which has been established, um, to the increase in policing costs owed by municipalities. Um, excluding any costs related to service enhancements. And they will also include a new discounts table, uh, in the regulation as well. Uh, the twenty-twenty-six billing statements, uh, are targeted for release in November. At the time of preparing the report, we have yet to receive, um, our billing statements. So, if I were to do, uh, some approximation of math, uh, based in upon last year's twenty-twenty-five amounts, our billing contract with O P P was in, uh, the amount of one, uh, one million one hundred ninety-three thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars, which equates to ninety-nine thousand, uh, four hundred and eighty-two dollars a month. So, if we were to cap an eleven percent increase over last year's costs, we could be looking at an approximate, um, total contract of one point three million, um, and change, or approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars a month for our new twenty-twenty-six annual O P P billing. Uh, this would equate to an approximation of, um, an increase of a hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars over last year's contract amount. So, I'm just providing that, um, as information, just as we're moving into budget season, um, just some of the cost increases that we're going to be looking at. Um, and, you know, I can't predict what our budget is going to look at right now until we take all things into consideration, but I did just want to provide that, uh, for council's information.
Questions, Cece?
So, Brittany, would it be safe to say that this is for information purposes only and we have absolutely no control or say in anything that happens? And the number will be what the number is, pay it or else. Am I, am I interpreting that correct?
Yes, you are correct, uh, through you, mayor, um, uh, to deputy mayor. You may recall last year, um, we went through a similar exercise where we were provided our costs increase and they were upwards of over eighteen thousand, eighteen percent. Um, there was quite a bit of feedback from many of the municipalities who were not expecting that type of, um, an increase. And the province did provide us with some relief. Um, they're doing that somewhat again in the sense that they're capping, um, the increase at eleven percent, but it's still a hefty increase, um, and it is what it is, unfortunately, so.
Please?
I just, uh, just a comment, uh, which probably has no value at all. But it's, uh, it's interesting to note that they're going to bill us, and, and along with a lot of the other things, this, this amount of money. And yet, when you look at the funding that we receive for things like the health unit and, uh, library boards, it is one percent or zero. Um, so I guess the ball doesn't work in both sides of the court the same way.
Nope, it does not. Uh, other questions, resolution?
The council received the report, twenty-twenty-six annual O P P billing update as prepared by the C A O treasurer for information purposes only.
Could have someone move? Councillor Strong, second by councillor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried. Uh, Santa Fund Committee request for donation. Brittany?
Yeah, yes, thank you, mayor. So, before council is a request from the Santa Fund Committee, uh, with regards to a request for donation. Uh, in, uh, prior years, council has, uh, approved a donation of two hundred dollars to the Santa Fund Committee. Each year, the Santa Fund does hold a children's Christmas party following the Santa Claus parade in Wobba Force. The event includes pictures with Santa, gifts for children under ten years of age. Uh, there's a bag of candy, free hot dog, and our event, or, sorry, their event this year is planned for December fourteenth. They utilize the Lloyd Watson Center at no cost, and the fire department contributes the candy pop and free hot dog, but the committee is responsible for all other costs. So, to help offset these costs and, uh, ensure the children have, um, uh, receive a photo with Santa and a gift, they are requesting a donation from council, uh, for their event in twenty-twenty-five that they can use towards their operations for whatever costs that they see fit.
Right, thanks, Brett. Any questions, comments? Uh, Cece?
I think these are the kind of things that we need to be supporting, uh, you know, that it's not a large amount of money. In fact, uh, two hundred bucks to me sounds like a little low, but having said that, if that's all they're looking for, then that's great. Uh, but I think that, that we, we really need to come behind our community and, and support these kind of things.
Great. Uh, resolution?
Mayor, I believe C A O, McCaw?
Oh, Brett?
Sorry, mayor. Uh, I just wanted to note that in the, within the recommendation, I, we did not provide a specific dollar amount. The, uh, committee didn't request a certain amount, um, so it's, uh, up to council, the direction that you'd wish for a donation. I did just provide last year's amount for council's information, if you wish to do the same or a different amount.
Cece?
I think inflation's kind of taken its toll, so I, I would like council to recommend that we, we donate two hundred and fifty dollars this year, just to recognize that the prices are going up everywhere.
Okay. Great. That's in the resolution. Could I have someone move? Are they going to read it, Robin?
Um, the council received the Santa Fund Committee request for donation report as prepared by the C A O treasurer. And further, the council provide direction to staff regarding a donation of two hundred and fifty dollars to the Santa Fund Committee. And I believe that was moved by councillor Deputy Mayor Ryle.
It was, second? Uh, councillor Strong. All in favor? It's carried. Okay, administration, administration monthly report?
Thank you again, mayor. So, before council, again, is the monthly update for the administration department. Uh, it's been another busy month, uh, as usual. Uh, for just a couple of quick highlights, the service delivery review, uh, is, uh, underway. Uh, the working groups, which consist of the engineering, communications, human resources, including consolidated benefits and the planning groups, have been meeting diligently. Uh, each of the working groups, um, have had their initial kickoff meetings and further meetings have been scheduled and, uh, data collection and review is currently transpiring. As noted, uh, by the fire chief, staff did, uh, participate in emergency management activities consisting, uh, consisting of business continuity of operations workshop, as well as our annual C E M C um, exercise over in Minden as well. Uh, on the recruitment front, uh, we do have the temporary general equipment, uh, posting, uh, available. It did close yesterday, so, uh, staff are going to be reviewing candidates, shortlisting and getting those, um, interviews scheduled. And the update for the deputy fire chief, um, the posting closed October fifteenth. Those applicants have been shortlisted and we are starting to conduct our interviews, uh, this week. And we will certainly keep council apprised as, um, matters continue with those. I'm happy to take any questions, um, regarding anything within the report.
Okay, any questions? See none, resolution?
The council received the report, November twenty-five, as submitted by the C A O treasurer.
Could I have someone move? Councillor Strong, second by councillor Lewis. All in favor? It's carried, thank you. Uh, twenty-twenty-six council meeting schedule and municipal Christmas closure, Robin?
Um, yes, so good morning, council. Um, so before you is, um, the twenty-twenty-six proposed, um, schedule of uh, regular meetings, uh, optional meetings and special meetings. Um, this is done yearly, as you know. Um, this is also done by many municipalities doing a similar approach. I do want to highlight, um, some individual months that do vary off the norm, which would be the regular and then the optional dates. So, January will include two meetings, one regular meeting and a special
So, January will include two meetings, one regular meeting and a special meeting on January twentieth. And the January twentieth will be dedicated to planning the two thousand and twenty-six capital budget. There won't be an optional meeting date that month. In February, uh, there are also two meetings. There'll be the regular, but then a special meeting on February seventeenth and to focus on presenting the two thousand and twenty-six draft budget. April and June, um, these meetings vary just due to staff election, training and education. Um, there's a conflict there, so we would be looking at April seventh as the recommendation and June twenty-third. For November, uh, well, as we know, it's an election year and so right now, there is just the temporary date of November seventeenth to hold the inaugural as the first term of council begins on November fifteenth. And um, we, you know, like to implement that uh as soon as possible after the term is to take over. The Christmas closure we're looking at for two thousand and twenty-six, um, we would propose to close at four thirty on Tuesday, December twenty-third. And we would be closed through till January first, two thousand and twenty-seven and regular operations would resume on Monday, January fourth. And during this time, as always, um, staff would be utilizing vacation or lieu days to account for the non-statutory holidays um when municipal offices are not in operation. And that is my report and if council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Hey, any questions or comments? See none, uh, Robin?
Okay.
Resolution?
Just one moment, Mayor. The council received the report, two thousand and twenty-six council meeting schedule and municipal Christmas closure as submitted by the municipal clerk and the council approved the two thousand and twenty-six meeting schedule and furthermore, that the Christmas closure be in effect from four thirty P M Wednesday, December twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-six until Friday, January first, two thousand and twenty-seven, with regular hours of operation resuming on Monday, January fourth, two thousand and twenty-seven at nine A M.
Could I have someone move? Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Strong. All in favor? It's carried, thank you. Um, county council, uh, our monthly report, Cease, I'm gonna just ask you if you would just touch a bit on our delegation. The other day, our presentation uh from the health unit, if you just uh touched on a few highlights.
Yeah, so, thank you very much for that, Mayor Burton. Um, as you may or may not know, uh, the, the, the merger has been completed between the original uh Peterborough Public Health and the H K P R. Uh, we are now known as the Lakelands Public Health Unit. Um, and, and, and we need to also recognize that uh, part of what we're doing is to look at how to restructure to get better service from, from, from the health unit for our communities and at the same time, look at how to, to do better with uh with, with the overall funding model. Uh, just so that you know, uh, Halliburton County, in conjunction with Peterborough County, uh, presented a delegation to A M O uh this last summer in, in which we were asking the province to look at the limited one percent uh funding that they had promised to us. And uh, we did not get a whole lot of, of information telling us that they would or would not do it. But what they did do is they allowed us to uh or agreed to a delegation to discuss it further. And the good news is that that delegation now has been, or the meeting itself or the delegation has been scheduled for November the twenty-seventh. And at that point in time, there will be people from um, from Halliburton County, including myself and people from, from the other parts of the health unit that will be going to meet in Queen's Park uh to discuss what we can do. Uh, it's not just a problem in, in our health unit, but it's a problem across the entire uh health unit system in Ontario, so. I think that's gonna be a great thing. Uh, don't know if, if anything's gonna come out of it. Hopefully, there'll be some funding and if not, then at least we would have been heard, so. Uh, we'll try to keep you posted and I would think probably in the new year now.
Thanks, Cease. Um, I think we're down to resolutions from other municipalities and uh levels of government?
Yes, the council receiving files of resolutions from other municipal municipalities, levels of government from the special meeting of council, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
If someone move? The Counselor Lewis, second by Counselor Strong. All in favor? It's carried, uh, correspondence?
The council receiving files of correspondence of the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five special meeting of council.
Could I have someone move? Deputy Mayor Ryle, second by Counselor McKenzie. All in favor? It's carried, thank you. Um, I think this time, uh, we'll leave the special meeting of council.
Okay. The council moves out of the special meeting into the closed meeting in order to discuss a matter pertaining to two-three-nine. B Personnel Matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, labor relations or employee negotiations or position plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board uh pertaining to municipal organizational structure review.
Could I have someone move? Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Lewis, all in favor? It's carried, thank you.
Mayor? We just need to pause for a moment till we get into close. You're live.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, rise report, Robin?
The council rise from the closed meeting and reports the following. Council discussed the item as stated within the special meeting of council agenda and directed the staff and officials to carry out any actions as approved in the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five closed meeting of council.
Could I have someone move? Deputy Mayor Ryle, second by Counselor Strong, all in favor? It's carried, uh, bylaws?
That bylaw number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-two being a bylaw for the purchase of shoreline road allowance by Weir at the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting be enacted, approved and signed with a corporate seal attached.
Someone move? Deputy Mayor Ryle, second by Counselor McKenzie, all in favor? It's carried, thank you, uh, bylaw number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-three.
The bylaw number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-three being a bylaw for the purchase of shoreline road allowance by Yakatu at the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting be enacted, approved and signed with a corporate seal attached.
Could I have someone move? Counselor uh, Strong, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle, all in favor? It's carried, thank you, bylaw number twenty, twenty-five dash seventy-four.
A bylaw two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-four being a bylaw to repeal and prove an official plan amendment number three pertaining to Basset at the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting, be enacted, approved and signed with a corporate seal attached.
Could I have someone move? Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Strong, all in favor? It's carried. Uh, bylaw number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-five.
Bylaw number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-five being a bylaw to approve the agreement between the municipality of Highlandsies and Votes, Canada, Inc. The two thousand and twenty-six municipal school board elections, internet and telephone vendor at the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting be enacted, approved and signed with a corporate seal attached.
If someone move? Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Strong, all in favor? It's carried. There's no notice of motion or confirmation bylaw?
The bylaw number two thousand and twenty-five dash seventy-six being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting of November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five be enacted, approved and signed with a corporate seal attached.
Could I have someone move? Counselor McKenzie, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle, all in favor? It's carried. Adjourned.
The council adjourned the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting at ten, or sorry, ten, twelve thirty-three P M and to meet again on December ninth at nine thirty A M for the regular meeting of council.
Could I have someone move? Counselor McKenzie, second by Deputy Mayor Ryle, all in favor? It's carried, thank you, council, thank you, staff.